All right, I'm calling the meeting to order at 7:02. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Okay, first order of business is approving minutes from September 9th and September 26th. I have a motion to approve.
Summoned.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion, questions, changes? Issues? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm abstaining from the approval of the September 9th meeting minutes because I was not at that.
Got it, thank you. Which one you abstaining from?
The September 9th.
Thank you. I would just like to start by acknowledging our village clerk for these fabulous finders that will keeping me organized here. All right, moving on to regular business. You all have the annual financial report in your packets. It has been submitted to the state comptroller's office as required. We did ask for an extension, so we are on time. And our role here is to accept the annual financial report. If something comes up or change is needed, we can make an amendment down the road. So I just need a motion to accept the annual financial report.
So moved.
Thank you. Steve, second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Any questions? I would be happy at another point if we wanted to have our comptroller come and just go through the because it's not the same and it's it's a lot of details back and forth to have maybe at a workshop she can just talk about what the format is and what you're looking at. Just as a future item. Any other, any questions?
Is it possible to go digitally?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. I believe it's also online. I mean, on the website.
Yeah.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. All right, the next item is this is a Village of Red Hook Justice Court grant application. This is a resolution to authorize the Village of Red Hook to pursue a grant application to obtain funding for the Village of Red Hook Justice Court. We have, we, the village justice has the opportunity to apply for a grant each year. Last year, he applied for a grant and we, and the big box back here is what we received. It just needs to be installed. And so this is an opportunity to apply for a grant for up to $30,000. I don't believe that he has determined exactly what it is going to be for you.
Well, he does.
I don't think it's on here. But I believe it is, yes, it is a fire and waterproof safe for important documents. And the good news is there will be some room for general village documents in addition to the court documents. And is the plan to put the vault in the safe?
Yes.
How big is it?
It's like a stand-up two-door thing. It looks kind of like a flammable sort of like workrooms, highway garages usually.
Okay. So about the size of like two fridges with a little bit left out so deep? No, probably one fridge. One fridge. Okay. With doors that open this way. So I need a motion, so this is Resolution 35, correct? I need a motion to accept this resolution, to approve this resolution?
Summoned.
Thank you, Kim. Oh, that was a nice pen. Sorry, distracted. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, the next item of business is, this is an amendment to our bond resolution for the WEA project that we are well, well on our way to finishing. We will be done with those projects by the end of the year. But this, the bond resolution needs to be amended because the original bond resolution had the total project cost of 1.8 million. And when the third project that we approved the bids on was the water main replacement for Cherry and Graves Street, and as you may recall, we approved going over the total, total project cost of 1.8 million. It is under, we approved and the project will come in under $200,000 over the 1.8 million. But this amendment is for total project cost, I believe, in the amount of 2 million. That's just so that we're not so that we've covered whatever's going to come in. If, the bond resolution is required to be for the total project cost. The WEA grant is 60% of the original project cost, so we have a grant of $1,080,000. Which we have, so we will not be bonding for 2 million. But the requirement is for the bond to, the bond resolution to include the total project cost. So I hope that's clear. So I need a resolution to approve, sorry, I need need a motion to approve this resolution to amend the bond resolution.
So moved.
Thank you. Steve, second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Super, thank you. Next item of business is 12. Kim, why don't I let you take this? Why don't you explain?
Sure. So this is, the company is called U Audit Associates. They came up with something that I learned when I was at Nikon Fall School. And they're a company that works with Nikon in municipalities to go through an audit utility and services that we pay for to check our billing, to make sure we're not being overcharged and just trying to get us back money where companies might be overcharging us. They also do contract dealings with charters, so if we have networks that come in and we can get a kickback for whoever subscribes to them. So the contract that we have in front of us is basically having them come through and review our utilities and do a quick audit for us. And we, as a municipality, would basically sign over paperwork that allows them to act in our benefit, to access our bills, to sort of comb through, as they understand line by line, what is actually, what's on the utility bills. And there's no upfront cost to us. If they find something, like if we get, they found like the last three years that we have been overcharged, basically, they would be paid in 40% of what they find. So we, as a municipality, would get to keep 60% of the savings and we would pay U Audit 40%. And then that would go, from my understanding of it, for the future, this contract, if we move forward, it lasts for a year. And so, any future savings, it would be paid 40% on that future savings throughout the end of the year. And it would be billed at an increment base instead of a one big lump sum.
It talks about, in their proposal, the basis for fees on refunds, which is straightforward. It's totally silent on the cost savings part of it. That seems like a whole section missing from, from here.
Yeah, so my understanding, I have an email out to them just to clarify, but from the the workshop session that I went to, it, from my understanding, it works in the same way. So for the cost savings, which would be that future billing, we would get, so like, say, Central Hudson overcharged us, you know, by however X many dollars in the past. That difference of the new rate, because they would look at that rate, would then be charged in the future, is how I understood it.
Typically, those, you know, they would specify, you know, the basis against which they're measuring and then for the period against which that 40% fee would apply, and none of that is specified in here?
So I'm going to make a, I'm going to make a suggestion that the motion to authorize me to sign, which is what we need to do, would be upon written confirmation of how they charge for cost savings.
Yeah, I think it will be important to see that information before we, you know, move ahead with that.
I think if we confirm that it's the cost savings for, for a year or the term of the contract, I mean, the good, the good news is we're not out any money on any of this. So if they don't find anything, they don't get paid. So that's a, that's a happy thing. And trying to figure out these, these bills is not easy. So would you, so if, if I were to phrase the motion as a motion to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement with U Audit upon written confirmation or upon written inclusion into the agreement of the basis for charging for cost savings?
Yeah, I mean, a year would be acceptable. Some of these contracts go out quite a few years into the future and you know, that, it isn't always clear, well, there's a couple of issues. One, are these things that we would have found and kind of negotiated a better package as we became aware of? You know, for the refunds, that's, that's pretty cut and dry. That's money that we've already paid, they're getting back. And 40% of that is reasonable and that's a customary thing. But as far as cost savings, if they identify how that's measured and how far out that goes, you know, some of those things can be pretty pretty long lasting, which, you know.
So upon written confirmation of charging for cost savings limited to one year? So if it's not limited to one year, we'll come back to the board?
That, that would be, I think, a good way to frame it.
Does that work?
Yep.
Okay.
And do we have any references, like from municipalities that have used this firm that we know?
They, they do have it. I can compile some reviews if you would like.
Yeah, I mean, it would be helpful to see who they've worked with and, you know.
The good news is, and it says here in the, in the contract as well, that they're a Nikon network partner?
Yeah.
And Nikon is not going to use them if they're not credible. I mean, that's the benefit to using Nikon is they're not going to put their name on something that is, they haven't checked out themselves. So that, that's the that is a good housekeeping seal of approval.
And they usually, from my understanding, they usually, like, if you are not a Nikon member, they would charge for these services?
Oh, not just the
Because they, they did a special partnership with Nikon for this.
Very familiar, firms almost, you know, if they're charging 40%, they almost never charge professional fees. The other option, they charge professional fees and you then are free to kind of do that on your own.
And just to your, to your question around, you know, could we find them ourselves? Of course we could. And it would, of course, we wouldn't say that.
It's a bandwidth to do it.
It, it would take bandwidth to do it. And I will say that of the certainly in the staff, there's no bandwidth there. And
That's true.
And, you know, if we had a board member who wanted to do that, that's there. But that's why I think this is, this is worthwhile. Because again, if they don't find anything, they almost always find something, right?
That's fair.
Can I ask a question about the cable? Don't we have someone that works on behalf of us when we're working with phone and cable and those cellular, no?
That's the cell tower.
Yeah, and that's, that's not, that's not all.
No, what he does, what his, his role is
He's doing contracts.
He's doing contracts with the companies that go on the cell tower.
Okay.
That's the limit of his agreement with us. Probably would have the capacity to do this, if I hadn't asked. I don't, that's not his normal business.
I just didn't want to be promising, you know, if they're negotiating stuff. Yeah.
Right. No, I think that, that's a different, different avenue. So I will ask for the motion to authorize the mayor to sign this agreement upon written confirmation incorporated into the agreement charging for cost savings, of the details for charging for the cost savings that will be limited to one year.
Summoned.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Next item, which is on the agenda. It has come to my attention that the board is required to approve any hiring, even if it is a replacement hire. It is related to funding. It was always my impression, since we had it in the budget, that it wasn't a new appropriation of funds, but according to Nikon, the board is required to formally approve, I guess, my appointments or hiring. So I am asking for a motion to approve the mayor's hiring of two replacement part-time laborers, Cameron Dunce and Jerome Smith III.
Summoned.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. And just to clarify, for those who weren't with our workshop when we were speaking, Jerome Smith III is the son of our foreman. But in consultation with our employment attorney, there's, there's no legal barrier for that to happen. And I will say that he, he seems to be an excellent worker so far. Which is good news. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Awesome. Next item that's actually not on the agenda. We have been offered two gifts that have been directed towards the Public Spaces Initiative. But they are gifts and therefore the village needs, the board needs to accept them. So the two gifts, one is Kaseki Farms has offered to sell their pumpkins at wholesale. And so the differential between retail and wholesale is considered a donation. And so that amount for the number of pumpkins being purchased is $300. And then David Sokol has offered a bookcase that was purchased for $323 for the seed exchange, which is housed at the community center. And so I need a motion to accept, got it written, it's the motion to accept the following gifts to the village. Pumpkins at wholesale, which is a $300 gift, and a bookcase of $323 for a total of $623. May I?
Can I have, oh, we're going to do the motion first?
Yes, let's do the motion first. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve, second?
Second.
Thank you. Questions?
The bookcase is going to live at the community center? It's going to be a village property at the, at the community center?
Yes. And as I'm speaking that out loud, I probably should make sure that we have the proper either insurance or agreement or something of that nature. But yes, I will follow up on that. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Do you have any donations?
The next item, which is also not on the agenda, my apologies. At our last workshop, we talked about, we do have ARPA funding outstanding. And we spoke about a few items that the Highway Department was had put forth as desirable. Two of them are related to storage. So we have, just to clarify, we have one storage container that was the electrician for the sewer project had this storage container, had rented this storage container. And when he was done, we all had approved purchasing that used storage container. And so we have one. What our DPW foreman has requested is a second one and also a canopy to go between them to create additional covered space. And I don't remember what we talked about before, but what he has, is requesting is a, basically a carport because it's made of steel rather than fabric. And that would go in between the two. So effectively, I believe he's planning to put a piece of equipment underneath that metal covering so that it provides another space to keep. I mean, obviously, if the wind's blowing and it's snowing, it's going to get some stuff on it, but it is more protected than less. And there are several reasons for this need. One is the Highway Department is responsible for storing all our equipment and vehicles. And at this point, it looks like, rather than have the Tesla go next to our, the Village Hall, that we're going to look to put the Tesla in the smaller building at the old Highway Garage and put the charger there. So it will be both inside and within existing. All we need to do is put the charger, there's, there's power to that building. So that takes away some storage space. We also have, with the new sewer service, we have additional inventory and tools that are needed for the sewer system, so we have a need for additional space. And so this resolution is looking to purchase one used 20-foot storage container to be housed, and it'll be at the back of the old Highway Garage. And what you have is three quotes. And the, the lowest one, including shipping is, I put up to $2,300 in case there's a plus or minus when we get to actually purchasing. And then the steel carport, you'll see that the initial one is a little cheaper, but that is out of stock. And so that this, the next one is just a couple hundred higher than that. And so that's for a cost of up to $2,000. And then the last item. We exercise the fire hydrants. We should do it every year. The fire hydrant valves are larger and they're, they're, we purchased a valve exerciser this year. That's for the water valves in the road. And that was actually very effective. We had not been regularly exercising our, our water valves. The hydrants, they're, they're bigger and difficult. And so we can only do, this is the Royal Way, of course, this is the Highway Department, maybe four a day. With this exerciser, it's called a hydrant buddy. It would allow for less physical exertion to exercise the valves. And it would mean that we could do them, we could get to all of them faster. And we might even be, might even have the possibility of doing it more than once a year, which we're certainly not going to do if we're doing it manually. It seems as though, so the, the price, you'll see, there are three quotes. Two are quotes for the same item. It's a brand, the brand name is Hydroverge Hydrant Buddy. It is, there are two different suppliers, so one supplier has a $100 discount, so I think it's about $100 less. And then the other one is a similar item, but it's not a hydrant buddy. And it is sorry, I looked at all this before. I think it has all the pricing on there. There's something different about that one.
Well, it's corded versus the other is wireless.
Oh, that's it. Yeah, I was going to say, there was an important difference. And obviously, corded, it would have to be plugged in somewhere. And it is, it's web price, which doesn't include, oh, here it is, the web price is the, is basically $5,500, which is basically the same price as the Pollard one. And the Core and Main is $5,400. And the Core and Main has free delivery. And the, the Pollard one charges $37. It feels like a lot of money for this small piece of equipment, but there's actually a lot, there's a lot of, a lot in the mechanism. And, and this is, this is what it is. So I am recommending that we purchase this, and I'm recommending that we purchase this with ARPA funding. And and so that's what this resolution says. So I am asking maybe if someone is interested in making a motion to approve this resolution. So moved? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. And just to confirm, because I can't do it in my head that quickly. Just $2,300, $2,000, $2,000, and $5,500. So that's 9,800. We still have, I think it's about 20,000 that's still unallocated for our ARPA funding after this. Okay, questions?
Yes, so the hydrant buddy, in the description, it says that it also can be used to exercise valves. And we have a valve exerciser. Do we know if that valve exerciser can, can do fire hydrants?
We know that it cannot.
Okay.
There is something different about the fire hydrant and the way that it is set up and the way the valve is that makes it different than the valve exerciser that we have.
This one can just do both.
I'm not sure that this one can do all of the valves that we have. It's not fully translatable. Though I think maybe the bigger valves, it can. But it's not completely overlapping. For sure. Any other questions?
Is it possible and would it be desirable to, you know, I don't know how often this will be used, but to rent it to other neighboring municipalities and get some cost recovery through that if it's something that's kind of sitting around a lot? Or, you know, again, I have no idea what the schedule would be for use of it.
So I think it's something that we can explore. I think the question will be, knowing our DPW foreman, he probably wouldn't want to just loan it out. He'd probably want to have a person go with it, who's used, who has, has used it. So I think that's something that we can look at. But I wouldn't want to add that into this.
No, no, I'm just a question.
If it's contingent, no, I think it's a reasonable, but if it's, if your notion is that it should be contingent,
No, that's not my, that's not my thought.
Then I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Kind of thinking in general.
Wouldn't want to agree with that, because I'm not sure the Highway, the DPW foreman would appreciate that.
I guess it would make it contentious.
But I do think, I mean, you know, at this point, we have, we have a couple of different items that could, could be used in that way. So it might be interesting to do an IMA that lays that out. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, thank you. Jake, thanks you. And then one other item that I just wanted to mention, we had talked about, I think it was at our workshop, we had a copy machine contract. And I think it was Kim who asked the question rightly. This was for the for the court copier. And we have discussed the possibility of considering dissolving the village court to have the town court take over the work of the village court. And so given that that is something that we will be taking up shortly, it seemed to not make sense to commit to a, what was it, a five-year contract? When if we were to proceed with that and if that were to be successful, we only have about two and a half years left. So Jen has done some additional work with Bell Copier, which is who we get this from. And so what they recommended was to just keep this one and go on a month-to-month rather than renew a renew the contract. So there's nothing for us to do, it will just continue and it will stay at the same price for the time being. So I just wanted to report on that. And given that I just mentioned that, at our next board meeting, so November 4th, I believe, I will be bringing the resolution to dissolve the village court in discussion with our village attorney. We are not required to have a public hearing, which I found a little surprising. So I want to put it out there and I want to get it up on the website as, you know, as soon as possible what the resolution is so that people can look at it and see it and consider it. And just to be clear, if we, the board, approve the resolution, it is it is or, I don't remember how to phrase this, but it is open to a permissive referendums. So if people believe this is the wrong way to go and they disagree with, obviously, we would have to approve it, so we could choose not to approve it, but if we approve it, then there are 30 days for anyone to get together a petition which would then require a vote, a village-wide vote. And then it would be based on what the vote response is. So just want to put that out there, it's going to be on the November. So if anybody has any concerns or questions or what have you, please, please, you know, So if anybody has any concerns or questions or what have you, please, please, you know, share far and wide, I will put it in my newsletter, because I want to make sure that this is done in an open and fair way, and clear, transparent, should we proceed with doing that. Okay, and then I have, I have a wonderful thing in my.
It doesn't have to be announced.
Okay, so I will just mention, we had talked about the EV, the electric vehicle charger that we have. We do have information about how often it's used, how many individual users, how much is used, and so that information is always, always available. So thank you, Jen, for making that available. I do not have any budget adjustments for this evening. Do want to point out that, oh, there it is. So our next workshop meeting is October 24th, and our next board meeting is November 4th. And with that, we move on to our department meeting reports, starting with Madam Treasurer. I didn't look, do we have, do we have the, is the microphone over there?
Testing, yeah, it's on. Okay, hi, board. This is the treasurer's report for tonight, October 7th, and I'm going to start with our account balances at the end of September. In the general fund, we had $1,630,105.10. The water fund had $292,128.8. Payroll clearing account, $87,903.59. The sewer fund had $221,250.3. Hardscrabble account, $12,204.89. Village green, $8,454.61. Health insurance fund, $9,116.60. And our petty cash has $52.93. The following are our reserve checking balances, so these are all our reserve accounts. Fire department, $10,344.05. Police department, $17,774.49. The USDA has $144,624.83. Highway department, $593.52. Snow reserve, $3,415.33. Tower reserve, $18,445.09. Unemployment reserve, $7,316.42. Court reserve, $3,435.23. And the office reserve fund has $1,012.80. And lastly, the monthly expenses for September are as follows. Out of the general fund, we spent $161,346.88. The water fund expended $424,891.63. Payroll clearing account, $2,542.69. And the sewer fund expended $16,231.21.
Thank you very much. I just have a question in clarifying, under the water fund, the monthly expenses, it's on the higher side, and that's related to a WIA payment, is that right, a project payment?
There was, yes, WIA projects, money comes in, and then it takes a little bit of time before the money goes out again. It's a reimbursement fund, so you'll see that happening from time to time. You know, similarly, the sewer fund had like over half a million dollars of expenses last, not September, but August. September had $16,000. So these funds that have reimbursable expenses can vary wildly from month to month.
Got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, I guess I need a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Someone moved? Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Madam Treasurer. There, all right, that's treasurer. Okay, so on to my reports. Starting with the original sewer project, Sewer Project One, we still have, we have two outstanding items. One is the single audit, which is required by the federal. Because we have a grant, it's federal-related, we are required to do a single audit, we are waiting for a draft of the single audit from UHY. And there are also final MWBE reports to be filed with the EFC, which, the Environmental Facilities Corporation, which is a state organization, and that's due October 17. And that now that final dispersments have been made, these can be finalized. And in case you hadn't noticed, the sign in the village parking lot has been taken down. We do still have it, though. Sewer expansion phase two, our working group met September 12 and 27th to review both ongoing operations and the phase two project. The draft IUP listing has come out, this was the first grant application that we made. We were not included in the bipartisan infrastructure funding. An appeal has been filed. And I can also report that we heard back from, I don't remember which organization, but they asked a question about it, and it looks like our appeal, they still have some further verification, but it looks like our appeal may actually be successful. And then we are, and the timing is the question, as to when we would then be, when we would have access to the bipartisan infrastructure funding, often referred to as bill. And we are working toward doing an income survey that may also help us get higher on the list. Abraham's Park Task Force, the survey is on the village website, the survey has a Spanish version included. We are looking to get more respondents, so if you haven't filled it out yet, please do, we do value your input. The Cooking Ham Trails, in my report, I said they are not formally open, that's not true as of this afternoon. There was an official ribbon cutting at 5:30 this evening. The Southern Trail connects with Abraham's Park. Reminder that parking on the north side of Park Avenue is now prohibited. Signs actually are due in on Thursday, and they will be installed this week. So just to remind you, you need to park on the sidewalk side of Park Avenue, and to not block intersections, et cetera. We, the, the area is really stunning, it was quite lovely to be, we were at the top of the, at the connection of Abraham's Park and the Cooking Ham Trails. It's really beautiful. We will also be putting up some signage or some form, maybe a ballard or two, so that if you are a biker and you are coming from the Cooking Ham Trails, please be respectful when you get to Abraham's Park, you may have some little kids on the trail, you may have people walking around, need to take a moment and assess where you're coming into, please. The union negotiations are ongoing, fire contract negotiations, I actually met with the fire company on September 12th, those discussions are ongoing. The WIA projects, so the first one is the SCADA controls upgrade, the new SCADA system, there's basically no, no, well, actually, I did not say that. The new SCADA system is on auto, on autopilot, meaning it is running the system. There are several punch list items that are being worked on, including, we're replacing the chlorine analyzer, and that, the material hasn't come in yet. We are adjusting the alarm system, and adjusting how the system alternates the booster pumps. The alarm system, now that, now that the bladder tank that was being used to supplement when the water tank, the water tank for the tower had no water in it, now that that's got water back in it, it is working very smoothly, and the alarm system seems to have been working just fine. And just as background, the SCADA system controls the water system, this upgrade will increase the efficiency of the overall system and how it operates. Avanti Construction is the contractor, and the cost for this project is $416,700. Cherry and Graves Street water main replacement, new water main on Graves Street is now complete, new service and tested. New service lines to residents, served by these water lines are now being installed. Final work will be paving, the paving of Cherry and Graves Street. Both streets are closed except for local traffic, no traffic is allowed on Graves Street except for those who live there. The contractors, Amity Construction, substantial completion is contracted to be December 17. However, they need to pave before then, because the paving, paving companies will close before then. The cost for this project is $13,560. We are on target for, actually, all three projects. So the third project is the water tank rehabilitation. We have received the official approval to put the water tower back in service from both the engineer and the county department of health. This project is now complete. The contractor was Worldwide Industries, the contract cost for this project was $373,500. I say the project is complete, it is, there is, however, an annual inspection, it is part of the contract that will happen a year from now. We also have the lead line inventory, which is not a WIA project, but it is something that we are required to do. We met on September 12th to review all the information we have for our lead line inventory. This is something that is required by the state for every municipality that provides water, to have an inventory of the water mains and the service lines, both on the municipality side and on the customer side, of what the, of whether or not there's any lead in, in our system. This is due to the state on October 16th. We are working with Village Engineer Delaware Engineering, and we will be spitting this up, this information, the information that we have, it will not be 100% complete, but the intention is to do, to make a, make a good effort. It is also a living document, so we will continue to update as we get more information. But the good news is that so far, we have not found any lead pipes in the village. Duchess County Transportation Council, I am a voting member, I am a rural municipality representative for the Duchess County Supervisors and Mayors Association. We had an in-person meeting on September 25th at the Wallace Visitor Center in Hyde Park. We approved the resiliency plan, which is something they have on their website, it's actually rather detailed. I'll include a little more information on it at our next meeting. Just a report on the Red Hook Library, I did not make the library board meeting in September, so I only have a brief report, but as you will notice if you drive by, construction has begun on the porch project. The front door is closed, but the library is, their intention is to stay open through their, through their construction projects, they have two. The first is the porch project, so all entries through the back door. But once the porch is the first project, once that is complete, then the stucco repair will begin. I don't have an expected completion, though I believe it is expected to be complete before the end of the year. I will confirm that at the next meeting. I did also want to mention that Archtop Fiber is proceeding throughout the village. If it hasn't hit you yet, I don't think it's hit you guys yet. They completed Red Hook Estates, I know they've been working back here in the southwest quadrant, and they were moving over to Maisland, Linden, and I'm told Park Avenue is going to be in the next couple of days. So they're proceeding. Just as a reminder, Archtop Fiber is a, an internet company, nobody is required to sign up with them, you don't, this, you don't have to, you have that opportunity. I will say that even if you don't go with them, the fact that we now will have competition will be a benefit, I think, to everyone, because it will keep, it will require Spectrum to keep their prices in check. And then just a couple of other notes, Neighbor's Night was September 13th, and Hardscrabble Day was September 14th. And I just, a huge thank you to our festival organizer, Jeff Walsh, deputy mayor, Mel Corka-Ciavol, events chair, Amy Smith, insider tent manager, Dan Pucci, and all those who helped to make these wonderful events happen. Thank you, thank you, thank you, can't thank you enough, it really was a wonderful day. And thank you to everyone who came out to enjoy the day and be a part of the community. We also, for whoever was in charge of the weather, they get, they get extra bonus points, it was a beautiful day. So thank you. And what I realized in driving around the village was, what we do here in the parking lot just enables everyone to take off from that and expand the whole, the whole event, which I think is really part of, part of the idea, is it just brought the entire village alive, which was wonderful. I want to say a welcome to the new VFW commander, I met with the, the new commander, his name is John Conroe, met with him, he came to meet with me on September 27th, and we look forward to working together in support, together in support of our community. Tivoli Street Painting, I visited the Tivoli Street Painting on Saturday, September 28th. If you've never been, boy, is it impressive, there's some very talented, talented artists who do amazing things with chalk. So congratulations to Tivoli, I'm kind of thinking we should steal that idea and do something, maybe on Neighbor's Night, we can have, we can, we can paint the, the.
I think we would pay on comparison to that.
Well, I think we would honor their attempt, and we would do it our own way, it would just be different. Maybe we could encourage some Tivoli people, some Tivolians to come to Red Hook and show us how it's done. The Red Hook Community Center had their gala on Saturday, September 28th, that was a busy weekend, and I did attend, was a great gathering of the community to support the community center. Executive Director Sarah Ugalini announced that the auditorium will now be named for the community center's founder and benefactor, Dr. George Marilli, and he was in attendance, and he, he seemed quite thrilled, it was, it was a wonderful moment. And best wishes to Ann, we will certainly miss Annabels. I did stop by on the last day of Annabels, which was Sunday, September 30th. After seven years of being an anchor on the corner of the main intersection at the center of the village, of the village, Ann is retiring. Thank you for all the deliciousness you provided to the village. And that is what I have for my reports. I do, however, have some things to say about the police department. The report for the police department is, for the month of September, there were 330 incidents, 198 in the village of Red Hook, 114 in the town, and 18 in the village of Tivoli. There were 110 water tower security checks, uniform traffic tickets, there were 56, 33 in the village of Red Hook, 18 in the town of Red Hook, and five in the village of Tivoli. Parking tickets, there were 11 in the village of Red Hook, none in the town of Red Hook, and four in the village of Tivoli. And arrests, there were eight, one in the village of Red Hook, one in the town of Red Hook, and six in the village of Tivoli. I do also want to read a letter that we received from the Red Hook Central School District Board of Education, to Lieutenant Hildebrand and the entire staff at Red Hook Police Department. This is dated September 14th. "We would like to recognize you and your staff for always going above and beyond for the students and faculty in our buildings. Specifically, we are thankful for the swift action, continued communication, and professional way you handled the situation at Linden Avenue Middle School this past week. The Board of Education would like to thank you. We appreciate your working together with other local law enforcement agencies to assist with the situation involved, all the while coordinating an investigation to make decisions on how to proceed. This was done in the family's best interest, and the safety and security of all our students were always at the forefront. On behalf of the Board of Education and the administration, I would like to commend your swift action regarding the situation. We deeply respect our working relationship with the Red Hook Police Department, and the school resource officers, and other local agencies. Sincerely, all the members of the Board of Education." So it goes to the Red Hook Police Department, and thank you. The fire company, the fire company report, what I have is through July, so in July, there were 31 incidents in the village, 19 of those were EMS, EMS-type calls, six were alarms, two were fires. Fires are fire, cooking fire, building fire, that sort of thing. Three invalid assist service call, person in distress, and then one smoke alarm type call. There were 52 in the town or outside the village, and of those 52, 30 were EMS calls, 11 were alarms, four were hazards, three were person in distress, and four were smoke alarm type calls. And I also want to mention, I believe, certainly many people have heard, but I just want to acknowledge the Red Hook Fire Company, they put out, they have adopted a fire department in Tennessee. Tennessee was really devastated by Hurricane Helene, and it's the Elk Mills Poga Volunteer Fire Department. Fire Department. And the Red Hook Fire Company has been accepting donations, I believe, for the past week. They, they basically have three trailers full of donations. So unless you were already planning to make a donation, I would say they don't necessarily need anymore, which is extraordinary. They're planning to leave very early Wednesday morning, and they definitely have three trailers headed, and it's possible they may have four that will drive down to Tennessee to, to share with the Elk Mills Poga Volunteer Fire Department, who will then distribute it out to their community. So kudos to the Red Hook Fire Company and to our, to our broader community for, for reaching out and helping beyond our own, our own area to people in need. The property tax collection report. Property taxes due to the village, the total property taxes that were due to the village, $1,420,566.62, and the total village parcels are 763. Counts receivable outstanding to the village as of October 1st, which includes the base and the penalty, is $34,595.73. Delinquent accounts as of October 1, there are 19. Penalties due to the village as of October 1, $2,263.27. So that is that. And they must, they must be paid by the end of the month, or it goes to the county for collection. The positive for the village is what goes, the county makes us whole, and then the county follows up with the collection of the remaining, the remaining taxes due. Okay, that is, those are my reports. Onto Deputy Mayor Kiarbo.
Red Hook Together. The October meeting was held at noon on October 2nd over Zoom. The guest speaker was Robin Paritz, who is a clinical programs director from Dutchess County Department of Mental Health. Attendees raised concern about if the county contracted services are being made equitably accessible to Red Hook. The conversation also touched on the topic of transitional housing facilities and the difficulties posed by the county's overnight county shelters being located in the Gipsy. No immediate solutions were proposed or announced. November's meeting time, topic, and location is to be announced. Red Hook Town Economic Development Committee meets bi-weekly at Village Hall on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month at 8:40 a.m. The committee met on September 11th and 25th. Conversation on the 11th focused mainly on the progress of the three building moratoriums in the town of Red Hook. Councilperson Jacob Testa fielded questions about updates, communications, and anticipated conditions in which the three separate moratoriums will be lifted. The September 25th conversation was focused on community events, the new fencing at the Cookingham West Trails, as well as how the committee could facilitate better communication and information flow between advisory committees and the town council. Dutchess County Safety Action Plan Advisory Committee, no updates to share. Village of Red Hook Communications Committee meets every first Wednesday of the month at 1:30 p.m. in the Village Hall Conference Room. The October 3rd meeting was focused on the application for a one-year extension for the Language Access Grant. We also identified a list of businesses and community partners who will ask to host brochure holders and distribute brochures. We discussed making the websites where Site Me more prominent on the page and/or including explanation text underneath the icon. We also discussed reformatting the bilingual information contained in the brochures into a poster format that can be displayed in the Village Hall lobby and at community events. We also discussed the goal of refreshing the village websites, menu bar, and page structure now that we are almost four years out from our last redesign. The Village of Red Hook Hardscrabble Events Committee meets on the second Tuesday of each month at 6:00 p.m. at Village Hall. The committee met on September 10th. The meeting was focused on the then upcoming Hardscrabble event. This year, the village launched a new activity called Kid Village during the Hardscrabble Festival. For two hours, kids of all ages visited 13 interactive stations that engaged children's problem-solving skills, as they learned about different aspects of the village government and municipal departments. Kids wrote laws with the mayor, identified incorrectly tagged garbage bags, learned what materials commonly clog sewer lines, sorted mail into clerk's office boxes, awarded building permits, and learned how local judges determine fines. We are lucky to have both the Public Works Department and the Red Hook Police Department set up displays that illustrated in full scale the newest equipment used by the village departments to provide important services. The Hardscrabble Music Festival had a beautiful weather and a great lineup of talented performers. Attendees may have noted the increase in food vendors and sponsors this year, which was a credit to the event coordinator, Jeff Walsh, and the assistance of our exceptional bar CCE intern, Jane E. Sutherland. We also want to extend a large thank you to all the village departments that helped to support this annual event, especially the Public Works Department and Police Department that helped set up, break down, and monitor the event all day. The next event organized by the Village Events Committee is the Village Halloween Parade. Parade participants are invited to congregate at the Village Municipal Lot at 1:00 p.m. on September 24th, which I did not include in the report. There will be trick-or-treating at participating village businesses coordinated by the Red...
26.
26?
Yeah, 26 is Saturday.
Thank you.
Saturday is the key.
It was, I think it was 24th last year, which is by some ahead. There will be trick-or-treating at participating village businesses coordinated by the Red Hook Area Chamber of Commerce following the parade. The next public meeting will be October 8th at 6:00 p.m. in the Village Court Room. The Village of Red Hook Human Relations Committee meets every first Thursday of the month at 7:00 p.m. in the Village Hall Conference Room. During the October 3rd meeting, we discussed a historian contacting us about the Indigenous History Project that we had put on hold previously. We are hoping to meet with her later this month to discuss resuming this important project. The rest of the meeting was spent discussing the blue law and the unhoused population. Linda Duval, a vegan at Christ Church, shared with us that a group of clergy from various denominations in Red Hook recently met to see what they could collectively do to serve the community members that are unhoused. They came up with several short-term and immediate proposals. One is to create care packages that contain such things as energy bars, emergency blankets, gloves, hats, and chopstick. The other was coordinating daytime warming centers, so there's always a safe, warm place available during the day. And the third was investigating whether the local churches themselves could offer emergency overnight shelter during the evenings when the temperature is forecast to go below 32 Fahrenheit. The conversation is ongoing, and there are meetings again in two weeks to discuss. The next pub, next public meeting will be on November 7th. The Village of Red Hook Highway and Public Works Department. Village brush, yard, waste, and leaf pickup. The Public Works Department will begin to pick up piles of leaves the week of October 16th. Please remember that leaves, lawn clippings, and brush must be placed into separate piles. The scrap metal program, there's been no additional revenue since my last report. And then CHIPS funding. The following amounts have been allocated to the Village of Red Hook from the New York State DOT for the New York State Fiscal Year 2024-2025. CHIPS, which is a consolidated local street and highway improvement program, is $58,089.3. Pave NY is $13,834.82. The Extreme Winter Recovery is $11,051.50. And the pave arcocles is $9,223.22, for a combined total of $92,198.57. There was no rollover from last year, since we used it all in other projects. And annual paving projects will be proposed by the Public Works Supervisor Jake Smith in the new year. Note that Charing Grave Street are slated to be paved after the water main replacement project is completed this October. And that is it for my, I have some more, all the trash and recycling rules that I usually say out loud are now just in the report, if you need to find them.
Thank you. Okay, Trustee Lang.
Yes, I do have a question.
Yes.
From Mel Corka. How does that compare to last year's CHIPS funding?
You know, it's just a little bit higher. Each of the numbers is like the tiniest fraction, maybe 100 or so, 200, 300, or more.
Sounds good.
Not less.
Right. Okay, I have, let's start off with a materials management report for the month of September. The month of September, the Village Highway Department collected 2.41 tons of recycling, and that was made up of 0.84 tons of kerbing wood, and 0.57 tons of cardboard, and one ton of paper. Village also collected 7.03 tons of garbage, which was transported to Accra at a total cost of $861.41. $808.45 of that is tipping fees, and then there's always a small, in this case, $50.53 fuel surcharge. Unfortunately, in September, we did have a small amount of contaminated recycling, which cost us $2.43. That follows, I think, a couple of months, but we have managed to get away with, well, not get away with it, but...
Just, just one month.
Just one month where we weren't charged?
Yeah, July we had some contaminated, about the same way.
The village also paid $246.63 in monthly fees for use of the Welsh Dumpster Service. And over the course of the month, the village collected $2,696 from the sale of garbage tags, and that's broken down as follows. $1,115 Village Hall, $1,200 from Taste Buds, and $381 from Red Hook Public Library. Next up, I have the Water Treatment Facilities monthly report. And during the month of September, the water treatment facility treated 8,432,729 total gallons, which is an average of 272,024 gallons per day, which is still pretty high. I mean, we're coming off a, a higher number in July, but I think it's still...
So in, just to, just to clarify, so in September, we still had, we emptied the water tank and refilled it?
Yeah.
So that's some, there was some additional valve exercising that often leads to opening a fire hydrant and letting it run for a couple hours. So there, and, and we, and September was when they restarted the Charing Grave Street water project, so the, the water main replacement, so there was water associated with...
Right.
With that. So what I'm hoping is that October will be farther down, because more, and actually, in September, there was a significant leak that was fixed. And actually, also this evening, we'll be fixing a valve that leaks on and off on Linden Street, Linden Avenue to...
Oh, right.
What's up? Isn't it tomorrow? It is tomorrow. It's not tonight. It's tomorrow. Sorry, I'm rushing it. It's tomorrow night. So there's just been a lot going on, so...
Right.
It, it, the good news is it didn't go up, I guess, but...
Right.
It is still high.
But obviously, I mean, the water tank in itself is a one-off.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. Actually, it got filled twice, because we had to, they had to disinfect it, and then drain it again, and then fill it again. So it was at least twice that they filled it in September.
Right, yeah, that's quite a bit of water. As we always do, we collected and transported three bacteriological samples for testing, and they all came back absent of total coliform and E. coli, which is reassuring. And during the month of September, the water treatment plant used 75 gallons of sodium hypochlorite. That comes to an average daily use of 2.4 gallons per day. I also report on the meetings of the Sawkill Wallshed community, but they did not meet in the month of September, so their next meeting is scheduled for October 30th here at Village Hall. And I do not believe there were any meetings of the Community Preservation Fund Committee. And I assume the CPF is still around $3 million, the Community Preservation Fund balance, but I need to get an update on that. I also have a utility billing report for the World Sewer Department for the month of September. $215,120.54 of utility bills were issued. As far as penalties and finance charges issued, that came to $301.65. $10,038.8 of utility payments were received, and the accounts receivable outstanding to the village as of 10/1/24 is $224,093.23.
And that, those are, those are due in the end of this month, right?
Right.
So they're all, it's, that's all current?
I just thought that worked for you last time.
Well, yes, got it.
And there were no bill adjustments during the month of September? Okay.
Wonderful. Thank you, Charlie. Trustee Bradley McCarty.
Good evening. For the Village Game Committee, trees have been ordered for our fall planting, and we're just waiting to hear about a delivery date. If growing availability is similar to last year, we can expect to be planting the first week of November. So if you are interested in joining for a planting day, many hands make light work, please reach out. And residents and businesses interested in having a tree or trees planted on their adjacent village street or New York State Highway, right-of-way, volunteering for planting days, or sponsoring a beautification project, please contact myself or Jim Kavanaugh. And we are actively recruiting members. If you're interested in giving back to your community but don't have a lot of time, this may be the perfect committee for you. For the sewer department, we, in the month of August, we had 9,000 gallons per day in the old plant, and processed 39,000 gallons per day in the new plant. We did five tests to check for bacteria, and all came back within the limits. And we meet every other Friday, and are currently going over the next steps of the Phase 2. And as the mayor said earlier in her report, the draft IUP was up, and we also reviewed the sewer use code, as well as connected documents for the town sewer district. If you have concerns about the expansion and/or are currently in the sewer use area and have comments, concerns, et cetera, please don't hesitate to reach out. There's also an expression of interest form on our website if you are wanting to connect into the sewer if there's capacity required. It will put you on our list of places to consider and puts you on our radar. For current sewer rates, please see the attached report. And as a reminder to all residents, whether you're in the sewer use area or not, please be kind to your pipes. What goes down the drain matters. Please don't place any fats, oils, or greases near the kitchen sink as well. And if you are in the sewer use area and the emergency alarm goes off, call the village sewer operator at 845-758-1081, and then press option 8. Only silence the alarm after notifying the sewer operator, otherwise we don't know that the alarm is going off.
Maybe we should, I will say that there were many children who learned about what to and not to foot down the sewer pipe in Kid Village. Perhaps we can add the alarm with the direction that they have to make a phone call first.
That's great.
We can bring in an old phone with the, the regular circular dial. That'd be fun.
For the speed limit initiative, at the time that I wrote the report, we were still reading for updated reports from the engineer, who is waiting on data from the county. And for the town Red Hook Greenway and Trails Committee, the town has been certified as a sustainable community by Autobahn International, in which the trails is a large component of that, as well as some of the art boxes that you see around the town. The extensions of Sawkill Trails Almost Done, which includes 400 feet of bog bridging, a split rail fence entrance which connects Lookout Loop and the outlet to Aspen Wall Road, and they worked the last week of September with many volunteers and Willoughby Land Trust on building the small footbridge. Also, the Cookingham Trail's, well, as of now, actually, they are ready. And I personally haven't walked the trails yet, but the committee is willing and planning to do so as an official capacity prior to the opening. If you are there, please just respect all signs posted. For the Climate Smart Communities, the task force should hear back soon from Cornell Cooperative Extension about the assessment we undertook. But during the month of September, we officially joined forces with the town and our members of ECLAY, and we'll work with them to get our greenhouse gas emissions inventory done, hopefully the baseline, and an updated report. As part of our membership with ECLAY, we'll have access to their library of resources and their greenhouse gas emissions inventory tool, which will make the process much smoother. Additionally, at the beginning of the month, we were involved with helping the quarterly repair of Cafe and work to create a full cycle of items headed to the landfill, and instead work on dismantling with tools in order to deconstruct it and then send it to local artists to become reinvented. If you are interested in having a small item which has been deconstructed for an art project, please reach out, and we can coordinate the process. Past items that have been deconstructed are vacuum cleaners, rotary telephones, computer towers, DVD players, et cetera. All items were headed to the landfill and instead played a crucial part of the repair Cafe. And that is the end of my reports.
Wonderful. And Trustee Alzeller, she's probably used to going first, but now we've given you a new experience.
Happy to go in any spot. Good evening. The Red Hook Village Building Department report is as follows. Nine building permits were issued. There were... There were no certificates of occupancy issued. 25 certificates of compliance were issued and there were four municipal searches. There were no orders to remedy or stop work orders or do not occupy notices or court appearances. There were some complaints. At 13 and 15 St. John Street, there was an issue with garbage that has been remedied. At 25 Fisk Street, there was an issue with goats, which is pending a site plan. 5 Woodlow Street, there was a metal roof with a glare issue, also pending. At 7578 North Broadway, there is a flag with antique flag, also pending. And at 7582 North Broadway, sign lighting and parking issue which is pending. During the month, there were four fire inspections. For the planning board, at the September 12th meeting, a site plan application was tabled to October 10th for St. John Street and 25 Fisk Street. And there were no zoning board of appeals actions because there was no agenda. All of the activity which was mentioned above resulted in $2,590 in fees being collected. For the Public Spaces Initiative, again, mission is to develop and facilitate creation of public park, art and community spaces throughout the village of Red Hook. Public meetings are held on the fourth Saturday of each month here at Village Hall. And the September meeting took place Saturday, September 28th at 10 a.m. The key topics discussed included the seed library, which is located at the Red Hook Community Center. And at the start of the summer, that resource was moved to a more accessible location by the building entrance. A new bookcase was gifted, which the board accepted that gift this evening to house the seed library. And additional literature on how to save and use seeds is now available. If people want to contribute seeds to that library, they can contact me and I can provide information on how that can be done. For the repair cafe, as Kim mentioned, on September 7th, the Public Spaces Initiative tabled there at the community center and it was an excellent platform for sharing information about the PSI and its activities and it's become a successful community partnership. Village Hall Garden Planning, discussions on an initiative to plant pollinator plants at the municipal lot are underway. And meetings will be scheduled with the mayor and highway department to review plans and discuss design, budget and maintenance considerations. And the possibility of adding plantings by the side entrance of Village Hall is also discussed, where there's a possibility of a new door being installed at that location. The big event coming up is Pumpkins in the Park. This will take place Saturday, October 19th from 11 a.m. to 2 p.m. at Abraham's Park. It's a community celebration of fall and Halloween and will feature arts and crafts, including pumpkin decorating, music and other activities for children. Pumpkins are being purchased from Kaseki Farms, who's offering them at a discounted wholesale rate, again, something which we approved at this meeting earlier tonight. A restroom rental from Superior Sanitation has been confirmed and the final site plan will be submitted to the village for approval prior to the event. I'll also add, it's a great opportunity for folks to come out and explore those new trails, which, you know, I've had the pleasure of walking a few times so far, really wonderful and it's a great addition to, to our community. As far as the planning update, the village's planner Nelson Popen Voorhees has submitted a time and expense estimate to get the adopted zoning law, which remains within their overall estimate. And specific next steps include preparation of draft zoning language, preparing mapping, working on secret documentation and meeting materials. And public community discussions and public hearings will be included in this next project phase. And that's the conclusion of my report.
Okay, wonderful. All right, with that, move on to general business. I just wanted to add, you heard in a couple of committees, a discussion of the unhoused folks that we have in the village. I have also been in touch with Hudson River Housing to discuss what kind of possibilities we would have. There is a law that's called Code Blue, which means that when the temperature is 32 degrees or below, that we are required, and which seems only very appropriate, to offer, offer a ride to available housing. We do not, however, have the capacity to force someone to accept the ride or to accept the housing. What's provided that service is the funding goes to the county. So right now, the only place for overnight housing is in Poughkeepsie. So I think that's one of the reasons why sometimes people will choose to decline if given the opportunity to go to the shelter in Poughkeepsie. But actually, I have a meeting coming up that will hopefully gather all of the people, you know, what a wonderful community that we have so many people talking about, what do we, you know, what, what can we do to help the folks who appear to need help? It's important for folks to know as well that the police department is certainly aware of everyone who is in the village who is unhoused and has conversations with them. I know that Lieutenant Illenbrand will start asking them out now, what is your plan? Because it does get cold. So we are working on, we are working on plans so that we have, so we know what to do when it becomes 32 degrees or less. But we do, we do live in a community that cares very much about its fellow, fellow people and that's, that's, that's a real positive. So I just wanted to mention that it's not just hanging out there with no plans, we're still working on it, just don't have anything specific to report yet. Anybody else have any other general business? Hearing none, time for a public comment. Anyone like to speak?
Oh, because I live on Cherry Street, which is undergoing construction for nine months.
What started in May.
And go on.
And, and it didn't, it, no work was done in July and August. It's not quite nine months.
It did cut the line, cut out and the dust is coming up. We've had a very dry end of summer. Again, nothing you can do about it, we had a water truck. Apparently, nobody does that anymore, but nuisance, but it's getting there. I'll just pick up speed now, finally.
Yes, I think there's an urgency to get done.
They also got the major, you know, issues of trying to pave it, getting it before the, the weather gets cold and they shut the plants down, but that's it. I, you know.
Also, just to let you all know, archtop fiber will be, one of the procedures that they do is micro trenching and they will not be doing that because they will be putting it in before the pavement. Because if they don't, they will not be putting it in, because they will not be cutting up our brand new pavement. So they will, they will be laying out their, their fiber shortly as well. Okay. Any other comments? Okay. I have no executive session for this evening. I need a motion to approve the vouchers upon review.
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Any other business? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.